Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, November the 2nd, 2015. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezger.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, October the 19th, 2015. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
Ed, previewing, I have none either.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, you have given a docket of corporate claims, forty-seven pages of claims in the amount of $1,327,132.55. The floor is open for questions or comments.
Do you have a question, please, on page twenty-nine? Under, it's almost halfway down, Dan Russell, Escvating, for eighty-three hundred dollars, and directly underneath, that's four hundred.
Yeah, it's a water line replacement.
Where at?
Brad, that was at Hartman Park, wasn't it?
Yeah. Runs from night to the, uh, the pit lane facility.
Was that part of the Little League?
Baseball diamond.
Baseball diamond. Was this something that came up after the fact, or?
It was included in the original project, and then I think they, they cut it out at the time, and then wanted to come back and do it later.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question, thank you.
No other questions, comments? I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated November the 2nd, 2015, in the amount of $1,327,132.55.
I'll make said.
Said motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. Under unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting, we have a request for a later resignation date from David Heinegger. Chief?
Mayor and Board, David Heinegger requests to withdraw his retirement. He plans on retiring later date.
I was a little confused on this, because normally, when we get these letters, they're, they're done. So, but him, but he's not done. I mean, he's just telling us that down the road, he's gonna call it a day.
Yes, he, he had plans and changed his plans.
But he's still on the job working?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Have we had a replacement for him already?
No.
In place, not yet? Okay.
Board members, do you have any other questions or comments?
No.
I think the first motion I would like to make is a motion to, ask for a motion to withdraw the retirement date of October 30th, 2015.
I'll make said motion on that.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I vote aye as well. And the, I need a motion to change, or to have the retirement date for David Heinegger to be July 6th, 2016.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That's some unfinished business. Under new business, we have a mutual aid agreement, Beech Grove Fire Department. Before I call you up, Jim, I'll defer to City Legal for an explanation.
Yeah, this is a mutual aid agreement that we've approved one in the past for between us and Marion County. And this is, I sent my comments to the chief two or three weeks ago, but in any event, you wanna explain more about it, Jim?
First of all, apologize for Chief Cheshire. He had a family emergency, couldn't be here tonight, so if I'm not as well-versed as he is in this, I apologize. Basically, yes, it's correct. It's, it's a, just a written document between us and Marion County that they'll come and help us when we need it, and we'll go help them when they, just basically puts in writing our daily activities.
Is this kind of like a renewal from year to year?
Um, I'm not sure about the expiration dates on that particular document. Craig, can you?
Yeah, we never approving it in the past.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's annual or biannual, or, I couldn't tell you. But yes, it's, it's a routine renewal.
Thank you.
Ed, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
And I didn't see only one, three small changes. So, I don't know if it's, we've been doing this forever in three days, so, and to reaffirm to everybody, this isn't giving something away. This is just a cooperation agreement for, to continue what we're doing as we speak.
Correct, correct.
It's like an MOU.
Yeah. All right, with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Marion County Fire and Emergency Response Mutual Automatic Aid Agreement.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. And Chief, this isn't on the agenda, but you have a letter for us?
Yes, thank you, Board. Received, the chief and I received a letter from one of our crews, the B Shift, regarding a run that they had back on the 26th of October, where we got the assistance of the Beech Grove Police Department, and I want to read to you the letter I got from one of my, actually one of our backup officers that was riding the engine that night, if you don't mind. It says, "Chief Cheshire, on August 26th, or excuse me, October 26th, 2015, Beech Grove units were called to the Willow Glen Apartments for what was initially dispatched as double seizures that turned up, in, turned into being a double overdose resulting in cardiac The shift responded and also had response from the Beech Grove Police Department, and the shift would like to thank and commend the Beech Grove Police Department for their actions on this run. Officer Smith, Spivey, and Williams were more than helpful in getting, getting us back into their trucks, obtaining patient information. Their actions went above and beyond their expected duties to make sure we had everything we needed to get our jobs done as well as we did, and we absolutely appreciate all their efforts on this chaotic run." So, on behalf of the, the B Shift and Tina Lee, who was the officer that night, I wanted to extend a thank you to the police department, and make sure they get this letter for their files.
Okay, now, go through this again. It was in the apartments?
Willow Glen Apartments. Evidently, we were dispatched for what we thought were two patients having seizures. When we arrived, found out it was two patients that had overdosed.
On what?
Uh, didn't say. I'm not really sure. One, one was in cardiac arrest, and the other one's in respiratory arrest. And so, immediately, our, our resources were taxed. We had both medics there, both engines, and we had three police officers there that, that jumped in and really helped out and did a wonderful job helping us mitigate the, the situation. So, we greatly appreciate their efforts and everything they did for us. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have about the, the incident.
All right, no.
Okay.
No questions.
Thank you very much.
Terrible, terrible scenario, Jim.
Yes, it's getting all the time anymore, unfortunately.
That concludes, uh, new business. Comments from board members?
Done.
Get out and vote tomorrow.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:15 PM. We will convene the City Council meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
[inaudible].
Good evening, and welcome to the third and final meeting for tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Common Council meeting for Monday, November the 2nd, 2015. In lieu of a roll call, we'll ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Mobley, City Council at Large.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezger.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District 3.
Ed Bell, District 2.
Mary Hugheser Stewart, District 1.
Kathy Coates, Council at Large.
Thank you, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no special presentations this evening, and Mayor Ballard's liaison sent me an email and that she would not be here this evening. The minutes of the previous meeting are not correct. I inserted September's minutes, so we will table that until the next council meeting. I apologize for that. Public comments?
Yeah, um, Donald Webb.
Good evening, members. Donald Webb, 1331 Middleham Lane, Beech Grove. I wanted to talk tonight about a problem I have seen. In April, and then this last October, recordings were allowed to be played before you of edited RDC meetings that were taken completely out of context. They were designed for political gain, as well as to insult or insinuate members of the RDC had acted unethical. I think for a group that comes together on their own time and volunteers, to have this type of smear be allowed to play at your meetings is wrong. I think the people who try to serve Beech Grove as best they can deserve better than that. I have no issue with anything being played that we have said at a meeting, but for one example, Ms. Tammy Story, who's our member at large, she's not allowed to vote, but she just volunteers her time to come to the meetings. The first comment played in the October meeting was her, and it was after the meeting had adjourned, and she was sharing a story that had happened, which you gotta keep in the context. This was in August, and what was going on in August in Beech Grove was Walmart, the Motel 6, and all this. She was worried about the Beech Grove brand and didn't want to add more to it, so she was sharing a story with members after the meeting had adjourned. It had nothing, there was nothing insinuous, but it was implied that she was trying to cover up something. Nice lady, she doesn't deserve to have, why, why would she volunteer or come to these meetings if this is gonna be done to her? So, I would ask all of you and the future of council when it comes to consider the banning of recorded anything that has been taken out of, that is not in context, or hasn't at least been approved or looked at by the city attorney before it's played. I think it's wrong to have good people have their names smeared to try to make a point. That's all I have, thank you.
Don?
Yes, sir.
Can you record your meetings?
Yes, sir, they're, they're recorded on TV, and we keep accurate minutes, and I've tried, I think I've missed a couple, but I also send the members of the City Council and the mayor a report of each meeting. We, we are as open and transparent as possible. That's one of the things I wanted, and we have never tried to hide anything. We often have Robert, our lawyer, there to make sure we're doing everything legally and correct. Again, I, my goal when I signed on, when I talked to Ed in 2000, what was it, 13? My goal was to improve the brand of the RDC, which, as you all know, it's been very bad in Beech Grove for a long time. And I could say, I can't, what do I tell my members when, if they say something, that it's gonna be edited together? And like, the meeting, the one in April was like five different meetings over 2013, two years ago. The one in October was at least two or three different meetings. And if there's no context, you all, you, you guys know the source, and you understand that, but somebody watching on TV or out in the audience, they may not know that source, and they may think that there's something going on, and, you know, just implying it with, you, you shouldn't be allowed to smear people like that, is my only point.
I agree with you 100%.
Thank you, David.
But we do have the First Amendment, freedom of speech.
David, I, I'll tell you what, you can play anything I say at that meeting. Alls I'm asking for is that it be played in context, either an explanation before or afterwards. I wouldn't, I could go back over your four years of City Council and take comments you have made and try to string them together to make you look like a fool. Would that be correct or right? It wouldn't be right. It would be insulting, and it'd be demeaning. But, and, and nobody should be allowed to do that. It's just wrong, I think.
Oh, I agree with you 100%.
I have no problem with anybody's First Amendment right, and I thank the council for letting public get up and comment. I think it's important for democracy. But I also think in that context, a person's comments should not be used against them or edited to make them look worse than, than they are. That's, only thing I'm asking is that you consider that in future meetings, that you do not allow recordings unless they've been reviewed, and they're incomplete or in context. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Anybody else signed up to speak?
Uh, no, uh, no.
Okay.
Jacob's gonna speak on the tax anticipation warrant.
All right, we'll move to committee reports. Youth Council, our principal of the high schools with us, Liz.
Good evening, Liz Walters, Principal of Beech Grove High School. I have a better voice than mine here. Brent Strala has joined us to tell us a little bit about his past experiences in the past few weeks.
Hello, I'm Brent Strala. I'm a junior at Beech Grove High School. Well, things that I participate in, swimming, I was here just a few months ago for the conference champion. I'm participating in track, and I also participate in tennis. A couple things that we have, you know, just going on at the high school is, we have a play coming up, Oklahoma. That might be good for citizens of Beech Grove to get out and watch. We also, just recently, we participated in a community service program. We went around the community, and some people, they, they raked leaves in elderly's yard. I personally, I went to one of our teachers, and I helped them around their place, and, you know, it's a, it's a good cause, and it's, I think, I think we need to keep it going. I don't really have other things I can really bring up. We did just get a new lunchroom. We got a whole new setting, new, new painting, and that was really good, so I wanna thank anyone that was involved in that. And I'll give it back to Ms. Walters.
Thank you, sir. He does have AP homework this evening and Spanish homework this evening, but we're happy to answer any questions, if anyone has anything for us.
You mentioned the play. When is that?
It's actually coming up. We have a Thursday performance, a Friday performance, and two Saturday performances, and that'll be the 20th, I'm sorry, the 19th, 20th, and then Saturday, the 21st. The evening performances are at 7:00, and the matinee on the 21st is at 2:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions from council members? Liz, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have an accreditation visit that's coming up for our school improvement efforts. We host an advanced ed group once every five years. They come in, provide an outside perspective with an external review for our climate audit. So, if it, if it's okay with you guys, I'll just leave my cards on the table up here. We would love for you to join us. I've put the date and time on the back for the committee interviews that evening. They would love to, to hear our partnership efforts and, and take a look at what you have to say.
I do have a comment.
Sure.
This weekend, we had a group of, well, a group, a lot, at our church for community service. Fantastic. They did a great job, and it was well-needed, and I wanna thank all the effort that the school is doing for the students.
Thank you.
For that. They seemed to enjoy it, too. Really did.
They did. I know that was new last year, myself being new this year. I've never heard of another high school taking the time to do that during the school day, and I think the connections that the students feel to character growth and just to development of bettering the community and the relationships with the community, it's really powerful in addition to, to anything we can do in the classroom, so it was an awesome day.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
The clerk passed out a report from the Greenscape Commission. The RDC report is in your packet. Did the Public Safety Committee meet? They did not meet. Financial report.
Good evening, councilors. The month of October, we had a Skidsteer lease purchase payment made in the amount of $7,892.73. This will be paid off in 2019. The insurance committee has met a couple of times, and Christian Duncan will be making a presentation to the Board of Works on Monday, November 16th. We were hoping to have it ready tonight, but there was still one bid out. The budget for both the city and the library were submitted to the Gateway. I also submitted the annual report for the redevelopment commission on the Gateway. Tonight, we will hear first reading on the tax anticipation warrant ordinance. As always, the amount of the tax anticipation warrant is not known yet, but we are using the Indiana Bond Bank once again. This year, the TAW was approximately 1.8 million, and I am hoping to see that drop below 1.4 million. The city website continues to grow and is a great asset to the citizens. Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at dan.mcmillan@beechgrove.com. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt services, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beechgrove.com. The bank balances are listed here, as well as on the city website, and as always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you, respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezger.
Questions from or comments for the clerk?
We'll move to unfinished business. General Ordinance Number 26, 2015, is up for second reading this evening. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 26, 2015, amends Chapter Title V, Public Works, Chapter 50, Sewers and adopts a storm utility water utility stormwater standards manual. Whereas, the intent of the manual is to provide for the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Beech Grove, protect and enhance the water quality of water courses and water bodies of the city, regulate stormwater discharges from new development, redevelopment, land disturbing activities, and comply with the requirements of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permits. Whereas, the City of Beech Grove intends to manage stormwater runoff issue, issue stormwater permits, and enforce stormwater ordinances and regulations. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, Section 1. Adoption of the Stormwater Standards Manual. The Common Council hereby adopts the City of Beech Grove, Indiana Stormwater Utility Stormwater Standards Manual as provided in Exhibit A attached hereto. Section 2, Conflicting Ordinances. The provision of all other ordinances in conflict with the provision of this ordinance and the attached manual, if any, are no longer in effect and are hereby repealed. Section 3, Severability. This ordinance shall be held invalid. Such part shall be deemed severable, and the invalidity therefore shall not affect the remainder of this ordinance. Section 4, Effective Date. This ordinance shall take effect and be in full for 60 days after the adoption date of this ordinance, and 30 days' notice has been provided from the mayor of the City of Beech Grove to the Director of the Department of Public Works of the City of Indianapolis to terminate an existing interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Indianapolis, Indiana, and the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, for review of stormwater permits and enforcement of stormwater ordinances and regulations. Now therefore, be it ordained that the Common Council of the City of Beech Grove desires to adopt the Stormwater Utility Stormwater Standards Manual. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the Common Council, signed by the Council President, attested by the Clerk Trezger, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 26, 2015, is up for approval on second reading, and I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number 26, 2015, is up for third and final reading this evening. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 26, 2015, amends Chapter V, Public Works, Chapter 50, Sewers, and adopts a Stormwater Utility Stormwater Standards Manual. Whereas, the intent of the manual is to provide for the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Beech Grove, protect and enhance the water quality of water courses and water bodies of the city, regulate stormwater discharges from new development, redevelopment, and land disturbing activities, and comply with the requirements of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase II Municipal Stormwater Permit. Whereas, the City of Beech Grove intends to manage stormwater runoff, issue stormwater permits, and enforce stormwater ordinances and regulations. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Common Council for the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, Section 1, Adoption of the Stormwater Standards Manual. The Common Council hereby adopts the City of Beech Grove, Indiana Stormwater Utility Stormwater Standards Manual as provided in Exhibit A attached hereto. Section 2, Conflicting Ordinances. The provision of all other ordinances in conflict with the provision of this ordinance and the attached manual, if any, are no longer in effect and are hereby repealed. Section 3, Severability. This ordinance shall be held invalid. Such part shall be deemed severable, and the invalidity thereof shall not affect the remainder of this ordinance. Section 4, Effective Date. This ordinance shall take effect and be in full for 60 days after the adoption date of this ordinance, and after 30 days' notice has been provided from the mayor of the City of Beech Grove to the Director of the Department of Public Works of the City of Indianapolis to terminate an existing interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Indianapolis, Indiana, and the City of Beech Grove, Indiana, for review of stormwater permits and enforcement of stormwater ordinances and regulations. Now therefore, be it ordained that this Common Council of the City of Beech Grove desires to adopt the Stormwater Utility Stormwater Standards Manual. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days upon passage by the Common Council, signed by the Council President, attested by the Clerk Trezger, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. The General Ordinance Number 26, 2015, is up for approval on third reading. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. General Ordinance Number 20, under new business, General Ordinance Number 27, 2015, is up for first reading this evening. At this time, I'll defer to the clerk for explanation, please.
Okay, this is what we've done in the past with the Indiana Bond Bank since 2012. This is where we borrow money to get us through until the following year, when the property taxes come out. We've got a gentleman here from, Jacob McClellan here from Boise, McKinney &amp; Evans, that is helping us on the tax anticipation warrant through the Indiana Bond Bank, and would you like to give us a little information?
Yes. Jake-
Yes, uh, Jacob McClellan with, uh, Boes McKinney and Evans. Um, our firm is serving as bond counsel to the entities participating in the bond bank's, um, advanced funding tax anticipation warrant program. Um, as Dan mentioned, you guys have been through this process before, everything, the, the process and the documents should all look, you know, very similar. Uh, they haven't changed much, other than the years and the amounts, but, um, the ordinance authorizes the issuance of tax warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank through their advanced funding tax warrant program. Um, it au- authorizes warrants for the general fund, the fire pension fund, the police pension fund. Um, the warrants to be issued would provide funds for these funds, uh, a- until the, uh, the settlements in, in June and December. Um, the not to exceed amounts that the bond bank's financial advisor has had us put in are the max levy amounts. So those not to exceed amounts are, uh, six million, eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the general fund, uh, seventy-five thousand for the fire pension fund, and sixty-five thousand for the police pension fund. I think the, the amounts that you borrowed, Dan, I think historically have been much lower than those not to exceed amounts. Um, the ordinance authorizes the issuance of the warrants for each of the funds and pledges the taxes to be, be received at the June settlement and the December settlement to the payment of those warrants. Um, the ordinance authorizes the form of warrants and, uh, warrant purchase agreements and all steps necessary to issue the warrants. Um, as far as process, the bond bank has received the city's application, uh, to participate in the tax warrant program. Um, they've received cash flows. Um, documents have been prepared, um, but, uh, and received by the clerk treasurer and your council. Today, we're here, uh, to ask that you introduce the ordinance, um, to participate in the program, and, uh, we would ask that you, uh, consider it for second and third reading at your December meeting. Um, documents, uh, have been circulated and will want documents back in December. Uh, pricing on the interim portion of the tax anticipation warrant program, which means you'll get money very early in January, um, will occur in mid-December with closing January fourth, and then the, uh, regular tax anticipation warrant program prices in mid-January and closes at the end of January. Um, again, this'll, i- if you look at the documents, they're essentially kind of the same as what you've used in the past. Uh, the process should look, uh, very similar, but, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council, have questions for council? All right. Okay.
Jacob, thank you.
Thank you, all.
Thank you very much.
Craig, you've had a chance to review this. I mean, this is standard as to what we've done in the past.
Absolutely.
All right. The floor is open for questions or comments from council members. If there are none, I would, uh, ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only on a first reading.
I'll make said motion.
Second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. I'll ask the clerk to read, uh, general ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand and fifteen into the record by title only, please.
General ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand and fifteen, is an ordinance authorizing the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of the general fund, the fire pension fund, and the police pension fund of the issuer in anticipation of and not in excess of current tax levied in the year two thousand and fifteen and collectible in the year two thousand and sixteen. Authorizing the issuance of temporary loan tax anticipation warrants to evidence such loans and the sale of such warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank, and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds to the punctual payment of such warrants, including the interest thereon.
Thank you. General ordinance, uh, number twenty-seven, two thousand and fifteen, is up for approval on first reading only. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion, sir.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second and third reading at the December seventh meeting. Counselor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Last order of new business is a request to hear a zoning petition, uh, at thirty-five, or thirty-four twenty-five South Emerson Avenue, Franklin Township, Council District twenty-five, in the City of Beach Grove. The petitioner is KLC Realty. Request is to rezone of point four five acres from I four S district to the C four classification to provide for a liquor store. At this time, I'll defer to council for explanation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, essentially, the Indiana, oh, that's right, Indianapolis, uh, DMD has asked us to, um, review this petition. We won't hear it on the merits this evening. What we'll do is, it's, it's very similar to what we did with the St. Francis property when they saw rezoning. Um, essentially, if we agree to hear this, we'll, we'll vote to agree to hear it. If we don't, it'll go back to Indianapolis and it'll decide the zoning issue. If we do vote tonight and agree to hear it, we have to set a special meeting two weeks from tonight, hear the petition, um, it, because there's a, there's a thirty-day rule, and our next meeting is not till December seventh. So if, if we agree to hear it, we'll have a special meeting, a public hearing on, uh, November sixteenth. That'd be the also next Board of Works meeting, correct?
Uh...
Yeah, it is.
Okay. All right. So again, tonight, we will not hear it on the merits, we'll decide whether we want to decide, whether we want to, want to hear it, and if we do, we'll do it two weeks.
Thank you. Floor is open for questions or comments.
Craig, I do have one question. How comes this is going through the council versus RBZA variance?
Well, good question, and I, I talked to Linda about that, but she said it was, it was more appropriate for the city council, 'cause it, 'cause it is a zoning issue. I mean, BZA, I think, is whether they're seeking a variance. They're not seeking a variance, they're seeking an actual rezoning of a property, so it's not a variance.
Any other questions or comments? This time, I'll ask for a motion to, to hear the petition at a special meeting on November sixteenth.
I'll make said motion. Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on November sixteenth at seven P. M. in each chamber. That concludes new business. Council comments, beginning on my far right. Dave?
Yes, thank you for coming out tonight. Tomorrow is election, as you all know. Let's all vote. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, Independent, the thing is very important that you vote. I mean, one vote can really make a difference in the election, so please vote. That's it. Thank you.
Thank everyone for coming. All right. Good evening.
Anthony? Um, real quick, um, I did get an email from someone who said that the light outside City Hall, um, facing the flag is out. Um, I just want to get that on record, that, uh, he asked me to, to address it, and I've already been an email to, um, Tom to get it fixed. Uh, but yeah, I'd like to echo Dave, uh, Dave's comment. If, uh, we can all get out and vote, um, we sure would appreciate it. Thanks for coming out.
Have nothing tonight.
Same thing, just get out and vote and exercise your rights, please. Thanks for coming.
Anthony?
Same thing. It's gonna be a nice day, so it, there's no reason not to get out, but...
The, uh, to Anthony's comments, uh, the light was, fixture was looked at this morning, and it's broke, so, uh, uh, they are looking to replace it. It was reported this morning, so, uh, we'll get that replaced as soon as we can. All right. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-eight P. M. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.